And welcome to the Abington Board of Selectmen, June 12, 2023. I would like to call the meeting to order. The time exactly is 6:31. And as tradition, please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Continue to please standing for a moment of silence. Hold on, let me fix this. Paul Byron, Paul E. Byron, age eighty-five, of Las Vegas, Nevada, formerly of Abington, Massachusetts, died peacefully on Wednesday, May twenty-fourth, after a two-years-long struggle with Lewy body dementia. Paul was the loving husband of June Byron for sixty years and was the son of the late Reginald Byron and Nora Byron. Paul was born and raised in Whitman, Massachusetts, and graduated from Whitman High School and received his undergraduate from Boston College. And upon graduation, he proudly served in the United States Marine Corps Reserves until his honorable discharge in nineteen sixty-six. Paul went on to obtain his master's degree from Massachusetts State College. Paul had a passion for sports and public dedication, public education. He was an educator, he was a teacher and vice principal at Avon High School for four years. He taught and coached basketball, beginning in nineteen seventy at Abington High School. Paul then became the principal of Abington High School from nineteen seventy-seven until nineteen ninety-three. A visitation will be held at Quayle Funeral Home on Saturday, June twenty-fourth, from nine a.m. to eleven a.m., followed by a funeral service at eleven, followed to Mount Vernon Cemetery in Abington. Donations in his name may be made to Cleveland Clinic's Foundation. Please join us in a moment of silence for Paul Byron. Thank you. May I be seated? All right, first on our agenda, we have public announcements. I will start. Suzanne, do you have any public announcements?
I do not.
All right, thank you. Mr. Donovan?
I do, I have a couple. Had me one, yesterday was Firefighter Sunday nationwide, where the firefighters paused to remember the living and the dead. And Abington, I want to give thanks to President Kyle Garia from Abington Firefighters Local. They put on an excellent ceremony at the senior center. The town manager, the chairman, myself, and Representative Sullivan were present, and that was a job very well done, as they do every year. Secondly, Memorial Day, we had a ceremony at Mount Vernon Cemetery that was put on by Reverend Dr. Christie Coben and her husband Ken, and Adam Gunnar, Veterans Agent, again a fitting memorial for all. And finally, thank you to the South Shore Vocational Technical High School Carpentry Program for the students who actually built the, as you recall, the first meeting I had mentioned about the Boston Post cane, which is a nineteen oh-nine cane. We have the original. Votec built a case for it that will be suitably installed outside the town clerk's office, so we'll have the cane itself there, and then when we give out the canes to the oldest residents, their names will be affixed to the plaque. So that's all right.
All right, thank you, Mr. Donovan. Mr. Tomasio?
I have none.
All right, Mr. Chapin?
Real quick, just congratulations to the Abington High School baseball team. Their exciting three-two victory yesterday in the quarterfinals of Division Four State Tournament. Tomorrow, they play at four p.m. in the semifinals at Leelacur Park in Lowell. I know it's a hike, but it'd be a great game, so everybody should get out and give it a watch.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chapin. And as Chair, I do have a couple of public announcements. The Massachusetts Walking Tour, just a reminder, is doing a concert on June twenty-second at the Abington Middle High School Auditorium. This is to celebrate our conservation and greenery in Abington. It will be at six o'clock Thursday, June twenty-second. All are invited to come. And if you would like to be a part of the talent onstage, you can go to the Massachusetts Walking Tour Facebook page and contact them to submit, whether you're a poet, an artist, a Grinch, or whatever you want, you can apply to be a part of the show. That's great. Just a reminder, Island Grove Pond Treatment, there is another day tomorrow, so just a reminder, if you're around, Island Grove Pond. And also, the summer reading kickoff at the Abington Public Library is Wednesday, June twenty-first, 2023, from one p.m. to three-thirty p.m. There will be reading swag, fun, games, tattoos, and a special appearance from Mr. Vinny and Bubbles. So that sounds like a really good time. And also, I also want to congratulate the Abington graduating class of 2023. Myself and Suzanne Jesper went to the graduation ceremony, and we're very, very proud of our Abington graduates. So continue to achieve for the stars and keep making Abington proud. So, and next on our agenda, we have public appointments. I would like to invite our wonderful Police Chief Dave Delpapa to come up to introduce a couple of new police officers.
Thank you very much for your time. I just wanted to introduce an officer that was promoted recently to Sergeant, and our three new officers to join the Police Department. Sergeant Canada, come up. This is Sergeant Justin Canada. Sergeant Canada is a five-year veteran of the department. He graduated from Abington High School, went on to receive his Bachelor of Science degree from Worcester State in Criminal Justice, currently assigned to the Patrol Division, works the day shift. In addition to his regular duties, Sergeant Canada serves as one of the department's firearms instructors. He's a defensive tactics instructor, TASER instructor, and formerly served the department as a field training officer. Sergeant Canada also serves as a member of the Metropolitan Law Enforcement Council's SWAT team. Recently promoted to Sergeant, just want to say congratulations.
Do you all do it all at the end, or you want to do it one by one?
Save your voice. You spread your voice all over.
I sound like, you know, Kermit the Frog. I don't know what Kermit, Kermit, Kermit the Frog. Just so in case you have to leave, because I know you have your baby here with you. I do have a citation, and typically I read the citation, but as you can tell, I have laryngitis and I don't have a voice, so I won't paint everyone on the ears of my voice, but I do want to congratulate you on achieving, Sergeant. My husband was just telling me you were at the range today.
Got to work, yeah, yeah.
So, congratulations.
Thanks, thanks. Next, I'd like to introduce our three new officers. First, I'd like to introduce Officer Helena Rosendies. Officer Rosendies graduated from Boston Latin. She went on to receive her Bachelor of Arts degree in Criminal Justice from UMass Boston. She's very close to completing her Master's degree in Criminal Justice from UMass Lowell. Officer Rosendies is bilingual. She is fluent in Albanian. And prior to joining the APD, Officer Rosendies worked for approximately seven years as a police officer at the Bunkers Hill Community College's Police Department. She also joins her husband Andrew at the APD, who recently graduated the academy this past October. Next is Officer Alyssa Seas. Officer Seas graduated from Archbishop Williams High School. She went on to receive her Bachelor of Arts degree in Criminal Justice from Curry College, just recently completed her Master's degree in Criminal Justice from Curry College. And prior to joining the APD, Officer Seas worked as a Public Safety Security Officer at South Shore Hospital. She joins her brother John, who has worked for the APD for approximately six and a half years. Finally, we have Officer Jacob Principi, graduated from Waymouth High School. He's currently working on his Bachelor of Arts degree in Criminal Justice from Massa Sawyer. And prior to joining the APD, Officer Principi worked as a Public Safety Security Officer at the South Shore Hospital. Join me in congratulating these officers.
And Squeaky comes back up, I apologize. I just want to say congratulations to you all. I think I've seen you all in a boat, whether it's training or different events. And as a wife of a police officer, I want to thank you for standing up in this profession, because it's not easy, but it doesn't go unrecognized. So I do have a citation that I typically would read, but as you know, I don't have a voice, and I apologize for that. So, thank you for your service. Good luck working with your brother, but it won't be easy, but it'll be okay. He's an asset to Abington, so we're lucky to have both of you here, so thank you.
Now, I'm just going to take a brief moment to give the board an operational update on the PD for our newest members. Some of you don't know, when I started eighteen months ago, the department was funded for thirty-one positions. They had, at the time, it was staffed with twenty-two full-time officers. However, one of those officers had been out for several years on long-term military leave, so it was actually staffed with twenty-one, which represented a thirty-two percent staffing shortage at the time. Since then, we've added ten new officers. We had one officer who previously left the department, come back, and we've had nine officers graduate from the police academy. One in February of twenty-two, one in April of twenty-two, four in October of twenty-two, and three recently in May of this year. Generally, it takes about a year to get an officer on the street, takes two to three months to hire, six months in the academy, and three to four months for a field training period. However, during that time, we also lost six officers. Two officers retired, one left for a police department in Rhode Island to be close to his family, one left for the state police, one resigned, and one is still on extended leave. The current status, fiscal year twenty-three, we had funding, we added funding for another three officers, bringing our total staffing to thirty-four. At that level, we're still down eight positions, which represents a twenty-three percent staffing shortage currently. As a result of the latest CBA, the department will be moving out of civil service, a process we anticipate will be completed by the fall. Leaving civil service will provide the department with greater hiring flexibility, as currently we can only hire off the civil service list or take lateral transfers from other civil service departments. In the fall, I also plan on implementing a cadet program. I'll be able to utilize those cadets to free up officers currently assigned to certain desk posts, as well as assist the department in hiring by providing another pool of candidates. Although we're still short-staffed, we're moving slowly and steadily in the right direction. I anticipate it will take at least several more years before we're fully staffed, but we'll get there. Finally, I've received some feedback recently regarding a perceived lack of officer visibility in town and a concern regarding the department's overall traffic enforcement efforts. Rest assured that this department's officers are proactively enforcing the traffic clause. I conducted an analysis of the motor vehicle stops conducted by this department from January first of this year until today and compared that with the same time period for last year. That analysis showed a fifty-seven percent increase in traffic enforcement. Eventually, as we hire more officers, we will be able to fill at least one other traffic officer position, and our enforcement statistics will continue to increase. Any questions from the board?
If I could, Mr. Chairman, thank you, Chief. That's very insightful for me. I'm the new guy, so I know the others have had the opportunity perhaps to sit down with you and get introduced themselves and get some feedback on your philosophy and so forth. I'd like to be able to have that opportunity with yourself and the town manager, just to sit down, introduce, tell you my background, and perhaps we could just chat further in terms of your background and what your vision is for the future. If you don't mind, I'd like to set that up through the town manager if possible.
Absolutely, you're welcome.
Great, thank you. We'll wait to hear from Scott then, yeah.
Awesome. All right, thank you, Chief.
Thank you for your time, appreciate you. Have a good night.
Representative Sullivan?
What was that?
Representative Sullivan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And like I said, I apologize for my voice, but I know Sergeant Kevin Cutter is here today, and unfortunately, he wasn't able to be at Firefighter Sunday yesterday. And as many of you may not be aware, but I was able to recognize some first responders at Firefighter Sunday, as well as nine-one-one dispatcher. So, back in January, my family had a, an emergency, and my parents had to have nine-one-one and first responders come to their home. My mother suffered a massive heart attack and went into cardiac arrest. And I was able to recognize nine-one-one operators, as well as the fire department, for their lifesaving efforts, and it's because of them, my mom is here today and is going to be able to see the birth of my child. So I want to recognize Sergeant Kevin Cutter. For his efforts that day, he responded to my mom's house. It's my understanding him and Officer Gillian were probably the first two on scene, and I've had numerous conversations with the sergeant, as well as Ryan, on what it looked like that day. And it's important that we recognize the hard work that these men and women do in our community and their lifesaving actions, so on behalf of my family, to you, thank you.
All right, first, action and discussion item on our agenda is vote to approve minutes of the meeting of May twenty-second, 2023. If there are no amendments to the minutes, I will hear a motion for approval.
Before we get into it, we usually do public comment.
Oh, my apologies.
It's not on the agenda, I hope we can make an exception.
Sure, yeah, absolutely. All right, so I will open up the floor if there's any public comment from residents. Okay, yes.
Nothing to do with tonight's agenda, but on behalf of the Abington Celebrates Committee, we would like to thank everyone for a fantastic Founder's Day weekend with incredible fireworks. From start to finish, the community came together once again to celebrate Abington's three-hundredth and eleventh birthday. Even though the surprise rainstorm during our family fun night at Memorial Field even threw it, everyone was very supportive, embracing the rain, and enjoyed the spectacular fireworks display that followed. We believe wonderful memories were made for years to come, thanks to the teamwork, kindness, and support of all in the Abington community, including our fire, police, DPW, school, health departments, town manager, Board of Selectmen, it's too many to name, but working together and playing together is what Abington Celebrates is all about. Thank you, Abington, from the bottom of our hearts. We hope to see you all at Oktoberfest weekend, from the Abington Celebrates Board of Trustees. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Kevin. Thank you, Abington Celebrates. All right, now, action discussion items. Vote to approve minutes of the May twenty-second meeting, 2023. If there are no amendments to the minutes, I will hear a motion for approval.
Make a motion to approve the minutes, May twenty-second, 2023.
All right, there is a motion, is there a second?
I'd go to abstain.
Oh, yes, that's correct. I will, I will make the, I will second that motion. All right, is there any other discussions to be had?
Keep going to do roll call.
All right, and then, all right, so, because one of our members is virtual today, we are going to be, every vote we take tonight, we are going to do roll call.
Just announce that she's participating.
Yes, Suzanne Jesper is participating, yes, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Donovan. All right, so we will do roll call, start, Ms. Jesper.
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Donovan?
Abstain.
All right, abstain. Chair votes aye?
Yes.
All right?
Yes.
All right, aye, thank you. All right, so it is four-zero-one, one abstaining, okay? Minutes pass, thank you. All right, next on our agenda, we have scheduled a joint meeting with the Board of Sewer Commissioners, appointment Abington Sewer Commissioner to fill the vacancy. I'm just going to notice a vacancy. We, the Town of Abington posted on Thursday, May eighteenth, a Abington Sewer Commission vacancy. In accordance with the Town of Abington Charter, Section three-fourteen, the Board of Selectmen hereby post the notice of vacancy for one vacant post on the Abington Sewer Commission. Any person who desires to be considered to fill such vacancy may within ten days following the date of the notice file with the Board of Selectmen and the Sewer Commission on a statement which sets forth in clear and specific terms the qualifications which he or she holds for the position. The person appointed to fill such vacancies shall hold office until the next regularly scheduled annual town election, at which time the vacant position shall be included on the ballot. Right? And I would like to welcome the Abington Sewer Commission to our board. Thank you. And I believe you have to make a motion to open your meeting, correct?
Yeah, just make mention that there's one applicant, David Nisby.
Yes, I was, I was about to do that. I just want to welcome them in for us before. We are in session. Okay, you are in session? Okay, and just keeping with it, we did receive one, we received two applications, one withdrew. The application before us is David Nisby Senior for the Abington Sewer Commission. Is, I see Dave here. Dave, did you want to give any remarks or say anything?
No, no thanks.
Oh, all right, okay, thank you. All right, so we are now in joint session.
So, I guess from a procedural standpoint, what I would suggest is that the sewer commissioners vote first, we'll vote by roll call. Each one of you indicate your preference, and we'll go right down the line, whichever candidate receives the most votes obviously is declared elected. So there's no need to do motions of nominations, we have one applicant, and you can start it off.
So the first, the candidate that we're voting for is Dave Nisby at this point?
That's correct. Just by roll call vote, state your preference.
Okay, I approve his nomination.
You're voting for David Nisby?
David Nisby, yes.
Aye as well.
I vote for David Nisby.
Chair votes aye, Mr. Tomasio?
I vote for David Nisby.
All right, Mr. Chapin?
Also, we'll, yes, for David Nisby.
All right, it is unanimous for, Suzanne, Ms. Jesper, I'm sorry. On the screen, sorry, Ms. Jesper.
Thank you, I vote for Dave Nisby, thank you.
Thank you. With that being said, it is unanimous, congratulations, Mr. Nisby.
Mr. Nisby, you hold office until the next annual election, at which point the position will be on the ballot for the unexpired term.
Correct. And if I might, Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to say thanks to Dave. He's a former sewer commissioner, so he's coming back on, you know, to help us out. We needed some people, and I'm thrilled to have him with us.
Great.
And thanks for your vote. All right, thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. All right, next on our agenda, we have a joint meeting with the, we have a joint meeting with the Board of Water Commissioners, appointment Abington Water Commission to fill vacancy. We have two applicants, Paul Malika and William Bill Cormier. So I will read the notice of vacancy. If water commissioners, please come up. Notice of vacancy, the Town of Abington posted this on Thursday, May eighteenth, 2023. In accordance with the Town of Abington Charter, Section three-fourteen, the Board of Selectmen hereby post this notice of vacancy for one vacant position on the Abington Water Commission. Any person who desires to be considered to fill such vacancy may within ten days following the date of this notice file with the Board of Selectmen and the Water Commission at a statement which sets forth a clear and specific terms of qualification which he or she holds for the position. The person appointed to fill such vacancy shall hold office until next regularly scheduled annual town election, at which the vacant position shall be included on the ballot. All right, welcome to, welcome commissioners. Mr. Chairman? Thank you. Board members, thank you for having us tonight at this time. We would like to open our joint meeting, as the water commission, as water meeting. Yes. Thank you. All right, so now that we are in joint session with the water commissions and the Board of Selectmen, we do have, as I said before, we do have two applicants, Paul Malika and Bill Cormier are the individuals here, and if they would like to come up to the podium if they wanted to say anything before we have our discussion. Come on up, state your name and address.
My name is Paul Malika, I live at one-fifty-two Presidential Drive in Abington. In terms of like background, I think I, yeah. I gave everybody a copy of my resume that's dated May twenty-second, twenty-three. I've lived in Abington since nineteen eighty-eight, and presently, I've been retired for six years and worked as a bank consultant for the past six years, presently with Rock and Trust. And prior to that, South Shore Bank, I was a retired regional president from Webster Bank for ten years, a retired regional president from Bank of America for a total of thirty, and I was with Eastern Bank in between there for five years. Education, I got an MBA from Suffolk, a BA from Stonehill with an economics, accounting degree, and an education minor, and some of the places I've been associated with, I'm on the Archbishop Williams High School Finance Committee, retired from the board after like five years, Germantown Neighborhood Center, which is part of the South Shore YMCA since two thousand thirteen. I was with the South Shore YMCA for a total of thirty years, treasurer for about seven, head of the HR committee for six, treasurer from Tony Lee for two years, and also presently on the Endowment Committee for the Woodya Street Health Center in Boston. It's across the street from Boston Police Department, for reference, Associated Industries of Mass, the Boston Conservatory, and the South Shore Chamber. And in terms of Abington activities, I've been a town meeting member, I don't go every year, but, you know, probably like ninety-five percent of, since nineteen eighty-eight, a resident. I was chairman of the Abington CPA for three years. Jack Buckley got it approved at town, town, town meeting, and I worked with Jack and Ann Riley to get it set up, and was chair for three years. And I was with Park and Recreation for, I think about eight, which is a long time ago. And I think some of the other things that I did at work, which I think would be a benefit to me, I did business with a lot of construction companies over my career. Some of the names you guys would probably recognize, Caliaco, Selco, done a lot of work, Delisandro, Jay Cashman, McDonnell Electric, Edward G. Sawyer, Callahan, G. Green, Kennedy Rossi, Feeny Brothers, and I know how to read an AIA requisition form. I've done many construction inspections, advances for projects up to ten million during my career. And in terms of people responsibilities, I had direct reports, as many as twenty, and indirect reports for up to two hundred, and I was regional president in Boston for Webster. The, also taught evening college for ten years, a number of years ago, at Quincy College, Cambridge College, and also Stonehill. I taught micro, macro, money banking, and corporate finance. Some of the things that I think that I would like to kind of take a peek at and maybe help out is, I think water quality is a big issue, water supply, capacity of sources, conditions of the pipe and equipment, impact on the seventy-five acres of additional land that Abington has at Union Point, what impact that would have on water supply, water availability, et cetera, et cetera. You know, how many permits have been issued, what type of impact does that have on water capacity and water commitment? Also, in terms of capital improvements, what's the plan for the next five, ten years in terms of what needs to be done, how are we going to fund it? And I think the, you know, water conservation seems to be like an issue in terms of one town has, has no requirements, Abington does, and, you know, I think the, in my career, I think putting both Abington and water together, I think the regional purpose for doing that was to achieve cost savings, synergies, being able to fund projects of huge size, and it probably takes, I would want to take a look to see if there are any ways that we could continue to save money and do that type of thing. So, so I think the, that's kind of my background, and I'll look at it to, any questions?
Any questions from either the board or the commission?
I think, you know, obviously your resume, I have it in front of me, I'm listening to you present. your presentation, I've got all the information. You've answered any particular questions that I may have had, so I'm fine.
I also think you have quite an impressive resume, executively, and impressed, impressive resume.
Thank you.
And I would just add, I think we're fortunate to have an applicant with Paul's background as business acumen. I think Paul, for those at home, has deep roots in Abington, and would represent the residents at a very high level. I think he was a successful senior manager and executive for some of the largest banks in America. And the other thing that he didn't say, but he has very good listening skills, he works well in committee, and he has strong influencing skills, and I think he'd be an asset on the Abington Water Commissioners.
I have a question also. I noticed that you currently are involved in a lot of other things, which are fantastic. Being a member of this board, are you aware of the requirements, what it takes to be a member on this board, and the meetings, and what, I know, you know, there's a lot going on, I'm just curious if you're aware of what the, how the board operates, how the, how, you know, we have distribution and treatment and how it works?
I, I'm not up to speed on that, you know, if, if appointed, I would get up to speed quick. As far as all that, how that, all that works, I would spend time to do that, you know, so. In terms of involvement, the, the Ashbridge Williams Board meets, we meet like probably quarterly, a lot of stuff we do off the phone, and, and the two days a week, I work, usually Mondays and Tuesdays, I work from like 7:00 to 4:00 in either Branch Tree Barter in Plymouth and stuff like that, so.
So you have time to do it?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from the board? Questions or comments? Ms. Justburg?
Okay.
And now, you'd like to give equal opportunity to Bill Cormier? Just state your name and address.
William Cormier, 92 Olson Street. I currently, well, I was currently serving as the commissioner on the board, and I've served the town as a sewer commissioner as well. I was the chairman prior to the election. I was unable to get my nomination papers in due to an illness, and I did run a writing campaign, as you all know, and there was a snafu with the election laws, apparently. I also serve on Park and Rec, as I have for almost six years now. I bought a house on Olson Street, and we're going to raise our children in this town, and I'd like to stay actively involved in the community. I do have a working knowledge of the waterworks, as a former commissioner in Rockland as well. So, that's all I have right now.
I will now open up to the board and commission. Any questions?
Just a question, Bill, you mentioned you're currently a member of the Abington Park and Rec Commission?
Yes.
Are you able to serve as, in two boards at the same time?
Yes, because that's an appointed position.
Okay.
Suzanne is also on the Park and Rec with me.
Who is it?
Suzanne.
Yes.
So that is viable.
And just, just as a clarification, with the mass general law, the, there were, there were two open seats to the water commission, and the individual who is now on the water commission won both seats, and according to our town charter, you cannot hold two elected offices, especially on the same board. But according to mass general law, it does not then automatic, because it was all writing campaigns, it does not automatically go to the runner-up in the writing campaign?
Yes, I checked with the state, yes.
I was just going to add to that, there was actually three writing campaigns, sewer commissioner, and then two for water commissioner. Mr. Dion won all three seats tonight, that's why we're here. Our residents voted, unfortunately, Mr. Dion won all three seats, it turned around.
I wouldn't say unfortunately.
Well, he got to pick whichever one he wanted, he picked, and now the two extra seats are here, or not extra seats, but are coming to an appointment of this board, as opposed to the voters. I think, like I said, a snafu in the election laws, but what can they have you? But here we are.
Mass general law is mass general law.
Yeah, that's what I said, like I said, a snafu in the laws, but that, I would make a motion to appoint Bill Cormier to the water commission.
Second appointment, Bill Cormier.
All right, there was a motion to appoint Bill Cormier, and there's a second?
Wait, 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 wait. We by roll call, we have to follow the same procedure that we did before. We'll vote by roll call vote.
Yep.
Starting with the water commissioners, whoever receives the most votes will be declared elected. So following that same procedure, I would suggest that we begin with the water commissioners. You have two candidates before you.
What proceed, there's a motion, there's multiple, the first one was one member, was one person going for one seat, there's now multiple people going for one seat.
We see, but, but filmed by roll call vote, we have to, because Suzanne is bringing this.
Does it say, it says it in the charter?
Well, it also could be the discretion of the chair, so, and I do want a roll call vote.
Okay, but what is that, how does that affect the motions? We, I was going to say, we've had remote participation before.
It doesn't affect the motion.
No, it doesn't affect the motion.
You thought you were now avoiding the motion.
No, 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 no.
Motion is the motion, okay.
Yes, the motion is the motion. All right, so that motion is on the floor, all right? Are there any other motions to be heard?
So we're going to go motions now?
Can anybody else speak from the audience?
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Paul Malika to the water commissioners.
All right, there is a motion on the floor for Paul Malika, is there a second?
Second.
All right, there is a second by Mr. Donovan, is there anything else, is there any other motions to be heard? Is there anything from the audience to be heard? Any comment from the audience? Anyone wants to speak? If you do speak, just address your name and address.
(inaudible) 16 Pond Street. I was just wondering, after a discussion that I had earlier, if Mr. Dion would be able to vote, even though, I actually don't know the rule, even though Mr. Malika was campaigning for you all day on Election Day, is there any, is there anything that, does that matter at all? Is it like an ethics thing, or is it?
I would refer to the town manager on that.
Let me just address that, because that was, that was miscorrection. Mr. Malika was not my campaign manager. He was in 2012, when I ran for selectmen, but this was a grassroots campaign, that Mr. Malika helped me, as long, and along with a lot of other people, at both the election poll and actually putting out literature. I feel bad, any literature that went out, I specifically said I was running for the one-year term. I went to the town clerk and notified her. Unfortunately, in social media today, when people put out my name, they came to the election, and basically, a lot of people said, I didn't know which one, so I voted for both of you. And as far as the sewer commissioner is concerned, I don't know where that came from. I never said anything about the sewer commissioner. So, so I don't really see it as a conflict, because he wasn't my campaign manager. I ran my own campaign, I did my literature, so that, that's that.
All right, any other questions or concerns from, from the board or from the public?
So I just, I did want to say that we got a letter that should be read into the record, though, from John Tassanieri, who was the chairman of the board, the water commission, and it's signed by, looks like, was it three Rockland commissioners?
There is.
Is there any more Rockland? How many commissioners are on the board right now? Just?
The current five with the vacancy, so there's three commissioners from each town.
So there's three from Rockland who are assigned here, and then yourself and Mr. Dion.
Correct.
So five out of this, five out of the six have signed, right?
Five, uh, four out of the five, because there's only five, yes.
Okay. Dear Board of Selectmen Members, my name is John Tassanieri, Chairman of the Abington-Rockland Joint Water Works and Secretary of the Abington Board of Water Commissioners. I would like to take this opportunity to request that you nominate and vote Bill Cormier to return to his previous position as water commissioner to represent our residents. Mr. Cormier has most recently served honorably as chairman of the, of Board of the Abington Commissioners, as well as a member of the Joint Board of Commissioners. His experience, knowledge, honesty, and leadership style has proved him to be an individual that has kept his promise to serve the citizens of our town in a dignified and responsible manner. William is also a previous experience, serving on the Joint Water Board as a Rockland Commissioner. William organized a writing campaign for this position in our most recent town election. He had many votes cast for him by Abington voters, but due to a technicality in election results, he was not able to be elected to the term. William continues to show as he has committed to our town's water resources and issues by attending all of our public meetings. Responsibility of being an Abington Water Commissioner, as well as a member of the Joint Board, is very important to our growth and to the commitment to improving water quality and upgrading aging infrastructure. William understands that decisions made in the position, in this position can and will affect over 33,000 people living in Abington and Rockland for the foreseeable future. I have known William for several years, and he has served our community in many capacities. In previous years, he has served as a commissioner for the Abington Sewer Department, and a member of the Abington Park and Recreation Commission. William has also donated and contributed countless hours of volunteerism toward worthy causes. I have asked that any member of Abington-Rockland Joint Water Commissioners to support and endorse William Cormier Jr. for reappointment to this position, to please sign below. And again, I can't read the signatures, but there's three from the Rockland Commission and yourself. I just want that read into the public record, and if we could add that to the minutes, that'd be great.
All right, thank you, Mr. Demazio. Anything else from the board?
Everything, Tom. I think we're good.
The write-in, the write-in numbers, I just wanted to do that real quick. Water Commissioner, 42 people put in for Water Commissioner. Mr. Dion topped the ticket with 302. Mr. Cormier had 13 votes from residents, and then it goes down to Mr. Paul Bunker with seven, and then it further went down the list. Paul, you almost made it. And for the other Water Commissioner, three-year term, there was 29 people with write-in votes. Mr. Dion, again, topped the ticket with 111 write-ins, and Mr. Cormier came in second with 22, and Mr. Bunker, you had eight. So you came in third both times, you were close, you were close, but, and then, I don't have, oh, the sewer, there was, the sewer commission, there was 17 people who put in. Mr. Dion had 14, Lisa Bezanzam had nine, and then Paul Bunker had five. So you're a Rockland man. So, so Mr. Cormier had residents that voted for him, he has the knowledge, again, that's why he made the motion.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes, Mr. Chafin?
I actually do have one question for Bill, if you don't mind, Bill. Sorry to bring you back up, I should have asked when you were up. You mentioned you were sick and weren't able to get your papers passed in, how many signatures did you collect before that?
I didn't even check, because I was not going to make the deadline.
Rough estimate?
I probably had enough.
So around 50, uncertainly?
Yeah, probably around 50, but I didn't have that cushion either.
Yep. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, if there's nothing else to be heard from the public or from the boards, all right, I will do a roll call vote for, in the order of nominations. So we will start with, Mr. Cormier was the first nomination, we will start. Mr. Donovan?
No, no, both names are in nomination.
Yes, they are, no, no.
And then by roll call vote, everybody decides who they want to vote for.
No, no, you gotta take the motions as they can.
Take the motion as it can. Yes?
No. Let me ask you this, what would be the, what would be the difference between doing a roll call and doing it by nomination?
One, one is against our policy, and the other one is with it, to take the motion in order.
Okay, well then.
All right, so we have, yes, we have to do them in the order that they were nominated, so Mr. Cormier's nomination is first. We will start with the, excuse me, the water commission.
Okay. Vote yes for Cormier.
Mr. Dion?
Can I vote for either one now, or?
Oh, no, right now, we're on the nomination for Bill Cormier.
Yeah. Yes.
So is that, is that abstaining, yes or no?
I'm not voting for Bill.
Okay.
Well, again, you get me confused now.
No.
The whole board is voting right now for the motion for Bill Cormier to be nominated?
The only motion on the floor right now is Bill. We have to go through, we have to go through his nomination first. So yes, no, or present?
No.
All right, now I will do a roll call for the Board of Selectmen, I will start with you, Ms. Justburg. For this is for, all right, thank you, Mr. Donovan?
No.
Chair votes no. Mr. Demazio?
Vote yes for Mr. Cormier.
All right, Mr. Chafin?
Yes.
All right, thank you. That is a, between the Board of Selectmen and the Water Commission, that is a, I can do that, thank you, three to four, the nomination fails.
Okay.
All right, next, the role of nominations is for Mr. Malika. We will start with the Water Commission.
Mr. Monica, no.
All right.
Yes, for Malika.
Thank you. We will now go to the Board of Selectmen, Ms. Justburg?
Yes.
Yes.
Chair votes aye. Mr. Demazio? No. All right, Mr. Chafin?
Yes.
All right, thank you. All right, that nomination between the, the joint, the Board of Selectmen and Water Commissioners, the nomination for Paul Malika on the Water Commission is four to three in favor. Congratulations, Mr. Malika.
I thought he voted three. I thought he voted yes.
I voted yes.
Oh, he voted yes, I'm sorry.
He voted for Malika.
He was the only nominee, he was the only nominee. I'm sorry, my apologies.
Five to two.
Thank you.
Thank you, my correction, so let me put that into the record. Mr. Malika, that is five to two between the Water Commissioners and the Board of Selectmen. Congratulations, Mr. Malika.
If you want. I don't even swear, you're going to get the vote.
Okay, at this time, we'd like to close our portion of the water meeting. All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, members.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Is there anything that needs to be said, Mr. Demazio? All right, next on our, on our agenda is discussion and vote on annual appointments, boards, commissions, and committees. We have our wonderful town administrative assistant, Nancy Hurst, with us to help us go over the appointments. So every year, in June, we have the boards that we, the boards and commissions that we appoint, they, they, they cycle, or not cycle, I'm forgetting the right word, but they.
They term ends.
Term, yeah, exactly. And they expire in June, so that's why now, we are now having these appointments. So I will turn it over to Nancy.
Oh, it's all yours.
It's all mine? It's all mine? Well, I wanted, because I'm.
If you had questioned something.
Yes, okay, if you wanted to say anything.
Can I try and make this easy? I'll try. I tried the last time, but. All right, for the annual appointments, I would ask that we have before us a complete sheet of people asking to be reappointed. There are some positions that there were, were more than one applicant, there were more applicants than there are positions. So, and then there was some new people that wanted to get on. So I would ask that we hold on community preservation, we hold on Strawberry Valley Golf Course, we hold on zoning board of appeals, and we hold on open space and vote them separately.
And there is a community preservation, there is a third candidate?
That's right.
Oh.
And subsequent to that, I would move that we reappoint for the Affordable Housing Authority, for the Abington Cultural Council, for the Abington Summer Concerts, for the Conservation Commission, for the Council on Aging, for Griffin Dairy Committee, for the Historical Commission, for Park and Rec Commission, and for the Veterans Memorial Trustee. The vote would come then on the renewal of those appointments, holding out the ones that I had said, and then we'll vote on the ones we hold out, what I motioned separately. So the question comes in the motion of renewing the ones that I just articulated.
All right, so is that, you have that motion on the floor?
Yes.
All right, is there, is there a second to be heard?
A second.
All right, thank you, Ms. Justburg. Any discussion or any other, any other motions to be heard?
The ones that you held out, you said there's more than applicants then?
Yeah, there's one, there are, there were new people that wanted, in, like, in the zoning board, one didn't want to be reappointed, but there's a new number wanting to go up. So all I'm saying is, the ones we're voting on now are people that are there that wish to be reappointed.
Do you want to, yeah, so the Veterans Memorial, the same thing, right? One wants to be appointed, one doesn't? Do we want to hold that one out as well?
Oh, no, all we're asking is that he wants to be, so he's asking, foresight is asking to be reappointed.
But the other one is?
Has not, so there's still. Has not, so it's still, it's open.
Doesn't want to be, okay, because it's not highlighted.
Correct.
All right, and before, okay, so there's a motion on the floor, doesn't sound like there's any other motions to be heard. Before, I do call for a roll call vote. Um, I do, uh, I want, I want to invite anyone who is up for reappointment, if there's anything you want to come up to the podium and, you know, say anything, or, you know, say, you know, I would like to be reappointed, whatever have you. I will open that now. Okay? Come on up, state your name and address.
Hello, I'm Kathy Creighton, and I'm on Community Preservation, so, since there's three people, I figured I should speak. Um, I've been on Community Preservation since it started. I actually wrote the, the plan that the town follows. Um, my background is that I have my bachelor's and master's in chemical engineering, and I manage, um, multimillion-dollar, uh, federal projects in environmental and engineering. So I'm pretty, technically, I understand a lot of what comes before us. We're looking at projects with funding and trying to help people figure out how to get their, what they're gonna, wanted to get done, including things like, um, making sure that they talk to the town manager, um, and, you know, do the procurement correctly. Um, we have instituted, um, asking them to think about contingency. They're giving us pricing for the current fiscal year, but they're really going into the next fiscal year, especially with COVID, that became important. Um, and we've been able to do a lot of really good things. I really enjoy this committee a lot. It's been very positive, things that we would have never gotten done in this town because, um, it's expensive, but things like the playground, redoing the tennis, I'm sorry, not the tennis course, the, the track, buying the open space land, we're hoping, um, next year to see the bridge project, you know, pedestrian bridge, see some community housing, and, um, hopefully some open space, along with anything else anybody might want to ask us to do because we're looking for applications in September, so please apply, or come and talk to us. Um, I also am very experienced with town. Uh, I have been on the Town Manager Committee, sorry, not the Town Manager, the Charter Commission, Committee, where we appointed, we changed the laws so that we could have a town manager, um, to form a government. I've been on bylaw twice, chairman once, and I've been on conservation three different times, this time as an associate, for about twenty years, and I really understand how town government works, so it's helpful because a lot of the members, um, don't, and being, making sure that we're following, they're all, the people that come to us are following the rules, is really important. So anyway, I would like to be reappointed. Um, I really have enjoyed this, and I'd like to continue to contribute to my community. So thank you.
All right. Thank you, Kathy. Anyone else? All right, so the, Ms. Just, come on up, state your name and address.
Yep, Nicole Emery, 197 Gene Carroll Road. Um, I didn't know this was on the docket tonight, but, um, I am the, the chairperson of the Open Spaces Committee, so I would like to be reappointed. Um, unlike Kathy, I don't have a ton of experience, but this has been, um, something for me to help grow the town's open space, work with Parks and Rec, work with the Commission, Conservation Commission, and I don't know if I'm up for reappointment or anything like that, so.
I, I don't, I don't believe.
It's different?
You're good. You are good.
All right, all right, thank you.
Keep up the good work. But thank you, thank you.
I heard what you said, so.
All right, any, any else, anything else to be heard? All right, so that, that motion is on the floor, so now I will, and there was a second, um, so now I will, uh, take a roll call for the vote for these, um, expiring appointments to be reappointed. Ms. Justburg?
Yes, I agree.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan's aye, Chair votes aye. Mr. Demazio?
Again, this is for all of the committees that we listed earlier.
Correct.
Uh, yes.
All right, Mr. Demazio, yes. Mr. Chapin?
Yes.
Yes, okay, unanimous. Congratulations to everyone. Make sure you, uh, go down to the Town Clerk's Office to get sworn in.
I'll send them letters, like, email.
All right, cool beans, thank you. All right, uh, and next, uh, did you want to make?
Yeah, if, uh, if there's no other applicant that, I, I guess, as we say, script our forever hold your peace, um, is it, yes, sir?
Um, I'm looking for Open Space Committee, you want me to keep now, or?
I do.
Open Space?
Do you apply?
Yes.
Brian Benson?
Yes.
Oh, Brian Benson, sure, come on up. State your name and address.
Hi, Brian Benson, 414 Woodlands Way. I might put in for both open space and community preservation, but I have no interest in trying to challenge an incumbent for community preservation, just four masks from multiple boards, so I've built into.
Okay.
Um, so I, um, have lived in Abington for about five years. Um, I recently earned my master's degree in public administration from Bridgewater State, so I suddenly have a lot more free time on my hands, um, now that I'm not in classes and doing, writing papers and whatnot, so I wanted to certificate back to the town. Um, I like to go hiking a lot, so I have a passion for open space in Abington and around the region.
Awesome. I love people who are passionate of open space, love it.
Happy to answer any questions.
Yep.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
Um, well, pending of which, if there's no further applicants, I would move on the community preservation that we renew the appointments of Steve Wakeman and Kathy Creighton then.
All right, so Mr. Donovan makes that motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, and Mr. Chapin makes that second. Are there any other motions to be heard on community preservation?
No, open space.
Open space.
Oh, you, community preservation?
He just did.
Community preservation?
He just did community preservation.
Oh, you said, community?
Yeah, no, no.
Community preservation.
Community preservation.
That was what the motion.
Because it was Steve Wakeman and Kathy Creighton.
Oh, oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Okay, all right, so, uh, let's see, so there's no other motions to be heard on community preservation. All right, I will do a roll call vote, Ms. Justburg?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Ms., uh, Justburg is yes, Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan is aye, Chair votes aye. Mr. Demazio?
Yes.
Mr. Demazio is yes, Mr. Chapin?
Yes.
Mr. Chapin is aye, all right, congratulations, Ca-, uh, Steve Wakeman, Kathy Creighton, uh, to the reappointment of the, uh, community preservation.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna bundle the rest of these. Um, the Strawberry Valley Golf Course, I, uh, I would make a motion, we renew the appointment of William Ryan. Um, the Zoning Board of Appeals, I make a motion, we appoint Richard Negrelli, uh, moving him up to full voting member, as Andy Burbine indicated he did not want to be reappointed. And on the Open Space Committee, appointing Brian Benson, um, as the applicant, that's my motion, those are three, separate, and that will take care of the entire list.
All right, and Mr. Donovan makes that motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
I'll second.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chapin. Ms. Justburg, Ms. Just, uh, Justburg, um, are there any other motions to be heard? All right, I will take a roll call vote, Ms. Justburg?
Yes.
Ms. Justburg is aye. Uh, Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan is yes, Chair votes aye. Mr. Demazio?
Yes.
Mr. Demazio is aye. Uh, Mr. Chapin?
Yes.
Yeah, Mr. Chapin is yes, congratulations, unanimous. All right, awesome, and again, just make sure you go down to the Town Clerk's Office, uh, to get sworn in, uh, and also, and Nancy will also be mailing out a letter as well. Um, with that being the case, um, with Richard Negrelli going up as a full voting member, that will leave a vacancy, um, as an associate member of the Zoning Board of Appeals.
I'll adjust the list for the website.
Awesome, cool beans, thank you.
All right. Da, 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 da. Let me just.
Thank you, Nancy.
All right, thank you, Nancy. Right, next on our agenda is a request for approval to host 5K Road Race and Walk on behalf of Abington Copes on Sunday, September seventeenth, 2023. I do believe we have someone from Abington Copes here. Come on up, name and address.
Hello, Melissa Cook, 358 High Street. Um, I'm the Chair of Abington Copes. I would like to hold, we did our first annual road race, um, last year. We followed the Coombs route, um, and we are asking to do it September seventeenth, nine AM, start in Enzett Woodsdale. Um, I talked to the chief, he's on board, he helped me last year, so he wants in too, if we get approved.
Very good. Awesome. How was the, uh, how was the participation last year?
Um, I thought it went well. I thought we had decent registration for our first year.
Awesome.
It was about two-hundred-and-fifty, so we hope to, you know, get bigger every year, so.
Cool beans, I like that.
Yep.
Awesome. Um, I know, so we, we sent this to, uh, Nancy reached out to, so you mentioned that the police chief, um, we probably, we do need the approval from the fire chief, correct?
You still need, we, we don't, and I don't, have approval from anybody, so what we will do is make the motion conditional on approval from everyone, DPW, police, fire, health.
I make a motion to approve, uh, pending approval of the other departments to host a 5K Road Race and Walk on behalf of Abington Copes on Sunday, September seventeenth, 2023.
All right, Mr. Demazio makes that motion.
Second.
All right, Mr. Donovan makes the second. Any other motions to be heard?
No.
All right, I will do a roll call vote, Ms. Justburg?
Yes.
Yes, Ms. Justburg is yes, Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan is yes, Chair votes yes. Mr. Demazio?
Yes.
Mr. Demazio is yes, Mr. Chapin?
Yes.
Yes, all right, congratulations, and just make sure, uh, to follow up, uh, with Scott and Nancy.
Okay, fabulous, thank you.
Thank you, Melissa. Okay. All right, let's see, next on our agenda is discussion and vote on proclamation, uh, proclamation and citation policies for the Board of Selectmen. Um, as Chair, I put this on our agenda, um, I think, uh, for, Abington has been issuing proclamations and citations, uh, for years, um, but I think it's a good governance practice, uh, in moving forward, uh, to have a policy in place of how we go about issuing, uh, how people can request proclamations, how we approve them, whether we approve or deny, uh, and move forward with it. Um, in your packet, you do have a Town of Abington, a draft, uh, Town of Abington Board of Selectment, uh, proclamation policy. Uh, this is something that I, I was doing my, my homework, uh, and looked out to different men, different towns who have about the same population that we do, um, or just a little bit greater, uh, that have proclamation policies in place. Um, and as, as municipalities do, uh, you know, we see when a policy works for another community, um, that community says, hey, you know what, we're gonna go, we're gonna use that one and, and change the name and, and work it for us. Um, so this policy, um, particularly, uh, this is from the language of Lexington, Shrewsbury, Sudbury, Swambskut, and I'm gonna butcher this one, uh, Carla's, or?
Carla.
Carla, yep, never can go there now. Um, uh, and I also did submit, uh, this proclamation policy to Town Council for review, um, but also, I think, uh, this being approved by other municipalities like ours, I think this is something we can implement. Um, it is two pages long, I'm more than happy, um, if residents have any questions or anyone on this board has questions or to anything, if you would like this to be read out.
No.
Um, but, um, so now, um, I will, uh, put it back to the board, is there's any comments or questions?
I'd like to see us work on this together, if, before we pass anything or even voted on it. Um, there's a few changes I'd like to see, I think, I think we can make it a little more specific to ensure that, that any proclamations are specific to Abington. Um, I also think, if we're given a proclamation, it should be a no-brainer. I would like to see it go from, I think you have here a majority vote of the board, I'd like to see that be at least two-thirds. Um, unanimous would be nice, but I maybe leave a little buffer in case somebody has a personal reason not to vote for something. But I, if we're voting three-two to give out a proclamation, then we probably should rethink giving out that proclamation. Those are, I mean, that's just a couple of changes, but I would like to table this and, so we have more time to work, work it through, um, instead of just one person writing a policy for us.
I, um, I, I'm not gonna say much, I just, I differ a little bit from Tim. I, I think we've done fine through the years, I don't, I don't think we need a policy, that's where I stand. Um, again, I'll go with what the board decides, but I, I don't think we need this.
I'm okay with that, too.
Just out of curiosity, why do you believe we don't need a proclamation policy in place?
Um, well, like you said in your opening statement, we've been doing proclamations for years. Um, I don't think that we need to, there's been no issues, is there an issue that came up that prompted we need this? I don't think we need to go down this road and put a proclamation policy in place, I mean, did something happen that we need this?
No, nothing happened in particular, but I just think it's good governance and good practice for us to have a policy in place, and especially, you know, we are just a board of five, and with, with our strong town manager, but let's say there was something in the community that the Abington residents wanted us to acknowledge, wanted us to talk about, have a proclamation for. We don't, you know, it's, we're only, you know, six people, you know, let's say someone is, there's a town employee who's, has spent so many years, their, their service to the community, that we should recognize them. Um, and this is where residents can know, okay, this is where we can go to request to have a proclamation or citation to acknowledge someone's service. Um, this has worked, again, for, for the municipalities that I read off, um, and I think this is, you know, I, I don't think it hurts us, again, it's good governance, having a policy in place.
And, yes, I, I respect your opinion, I'm just, I think we don't need it, I just, I think we've done fine, and I.
Well, okay, well, well, how long do we need to review this two-page policy?
I don't think we need to renew, uh, review it at all, I just would, I would just not move forward with it.
Anything else from the board, Ms. Justburg, Mr. Donovan?
Um, well.
I don't think we need to review the policy, I mean, this is what other towns are using to have as a baseline to let Abington know that we do have proclamations, we can come to our Selectman Board. I don't have a problem with having this stated, my personal opinion.
Recognizing people that should be recognized, I mean, it's, it's not uncommon, it's a small town, we know who's retiring, we know who's had, you know, some sort of heroic event, you know, like you saw, um, our state rep tonight, she came and she gave an award out, but I, I don't think we necessarily need this, I think we've done a good job, and we're independently elected, five of us here, and we, again, that changes, as it just changed to people on the board, I don't think that we need to, the residents vote with us, and I think we've done a great job of this.
Well, in, in deference, if Tim wants more time to think about it, I, I think we owe him that courtesy.
Yeah, I just think, I just think we should work on it, you know, together, maybe as a subcommittee, I mean, it, honestly, I, I'm not saying, you know, we need to meet for eight hours a day for the next month over this policy, but just get a, a second set of, um, opinions and thoughts in on it.
I mean, do you want, yeah.
Well, what, if Tim's making a motion to table, um, for further review, then I'll second that, and we can take a look at it and give it some time.
I'll make that motion.
All right, there was a motion, and then there was a second. Are there any other motions to be made? Any other further?
No, I don't.
Any comments?
I don't think a motion from you would change anything, it's. I don't think a motion from you would change anything.
Oh, oh, that's right, no.
It's, yeah.
We can table this, we, actually, I can, I can table this and I put this on another meeting.
Well, we got a motion in the second, so.
Well, there's a motion, a second, so I, all right, Ms. Justburg?
I agree.
All right, Ms. Justburg is yes. Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
All right, Chair votes no. Mr. DiMaggio?
I will vote for the board to table if that's the best interest, so yes.
Mr. DiMaggio is yes. Mr. Chapin?
Yes.
All right, yes, all right, so that is four to one on this, the proclamation policy, we pass over, all right, for, for further review. And next on the agenda is discussion and vote on proclamation in recognition of Pride Month. As, again, as I suggested with the proclamation policies for the Board of Selectmen, I have also drafted up a proclamation for Pride Month. For people who don't know, that is for recognition of the LGBTQ community. I drafted this up, looking at also what other municipalities have done, and this as a, as proclamations are an expression of support for people in our community, different causes, celebrations of different things and awarenesses. I think this is a, a great expression of solidarity for the LGBTQ residents of Abington, and that, so that, in, for people in our community that know that all people are welcomed in Abington. As the author of the proposed drafted proclamation, I did reach out to individuals in Abington and outside for their input, because I felt that, looking back at Abington's history, Abington has never issued a proclamation like this, that I wanted to make sure that the language was, was suited, that to make sure that, you know, valued the perspectives of people within the LGBTQ community, as myself, but, you know, make sure that, you know, the language of the text, it was best for the town of Abington. I, and so we did table over the, the proclamation policy. However, as it was stated, we do not have a policy in place for proclamations, so there is nothing that restricts us from issuing this proclamation and holding this vote tonight. I, you know, I, I sent this proclamation to my fellow Board of Selectmen on June 2nd, and it was also in your packets on Friday that Nancy put in. I think this would be a, a great thing for the town to issue a proclamation for Pride Month. And also, as a starting point of issuing proclamations for the town of Abington, whether it be Military Appreciation Month, or Breast Cancer Awareness Month, or Juneteenth, or, you know, Martin Luther King Jr. Day, different things in our community, autism awareness, I think this is a, this is hopefully the first of many, if approved, this is the, the first of many proclamations that we can give out to the, to the town of Abington, and show how inclusive and how great our community truly is. Well, I have shared my opinions, I will now bring it back to the board.
Are you making a motion?
I, I have not put a motion yet. I, I wanted to hear input from, from the board.
I think this proclamation is, isn't really specific to Abington. I think it would open a can of worms that really, I mean, now we wanna give out proclamations for Memorial Day, for, for Juneteenth, for, just kinda going Fourth of July, I mean, what? Pride Month's already a thing, it's a great thing. It's not specific to Abington, we don't need our own proclamation to recognize it.
I think it is specific to Abington. We have LGBTQ residents, and this is important to different people, and to make sure that people in this community feel accepted. You know, and granted, gay right, the, the gay rights movement has moved far since it was decriminalized across the country, and in Massachusetts in 1974. But proclamations, proclamations are specifically to raise awareness and to acknowledge and celebrations of different things in our community and people. You know, and I, the, the, the language of this proclamation is Abington-related. And, and again, I say, we have issued proclamations in the past, so why is this one any different?
Because the ones we've issued in the past are specific to a person or a business in town that has maybe, you know, contributed twenty, thirty years of, of themselves. If this was a specific person.
Hold up, Ms. Justburg, Tim is taking, Mr. Chapin is speaking. Then I'll, then I'll turn it over to you. Mr. Chapin?
If it was for a specific person that had done something in town, or maybe a business, I would think differently, but I think this is a can of worms that you can't really close once you open.
All right, Ms. Justburg?
Thank you. In my opinion, I do agree, the contributions, the importance of recognizing different groups. I think this is important for our small town of Abington. I also think that our Abington High School has a GSA group. I agree with doing this proclamation for Pride Month.
Yeah, if I could. I think if, in my estimation, if this is important to you, Alex, I, I agree with it. I think, but however, let me go one step further. I don't know that we really need to be issuing proclamations for every holiday that comes down the road. I, I am agreeing with this, because this is an issue that you, you, is personal to you, and I, I respect that, and I, I will support that. In terms of going forward, though, I would caution that we don't get, I guess going along with what Tim has said, I think I would wanna structure it a little bit more focused in terms of relating to the town of Abington. I mean, in the years I've been on, we, we really haven't had an issue, and generally we issue proclamations if, on a retirement, you know, if the boys, a girl's basketball team wins a championship, we'll make note of the meeting, we may have them up, you know, that type of thing. But in, as it relates to this issue, yes, I will support it, because I know this is an issue near and daily.
Our vote is setting a precedent for.
What precedent is it setting?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Chairman.
No, go for, go for Mr. Chapin.
I was talking, it's just setting a precedent to do exactly what you don't want to happen. I know I'm not gonna talk you out of it, I'm not even trying to, I'm just, I'm just cautioning. I'm afraid of what's coming down, I'm not afraid of this proclamation, I don't.
I guess.
It's fine, I just think it's.
I guess the next.
Gonna lead to problems. Sorry, Captain.
Yeah, no, I mean, I guess just what are our parameters, you know, I mean, that goes into, where does this go? You know, taking this, I'm not looking at this, I'm just saying in general, proclamations.
Let me put it this way, when it pertains particularly to this proclamation. To quote Rick Brunel, equal rights shouldn't be a political partisan issue. There should be no issue issuing a proclamation to support people in our community. And that being a, a path that we don't wanna go down is absolutely absurd. The idea that approving something like this, which we have appointed, we have approved proclamations before, so why is it this one in particular? Why is it this one in particular? And I'm not, I, I'm trying not to be emotional about it, but there shouldn't be an issue with this. We issued last month a proclamation, well-deserved, to fire Chief John Nodda. We didn't hold a public meeting about it, we didn't hold a vote about it, we did it. There were no problems with it, none, and, and Chief Nodda, well-deserved. But for some reason, this is in particular, you don't wanna do this? Setting a precedent, my foot.
Okay, the motion.
But no, I, if there's anyone in the audience who would like, I would like to open up to public comment.
Nicole, excuse me.
Say your name and address.
Yeah, Nicole Emery, 197 Gene Carroll Road. I agree with allowing people to have the choice to live how they wanna live. Totally agree with that. But I wanna read from the US Census.gov, out of one million, one hundred and twenty-seven million, five hundred and forty-four thousand, seven hundred and thirty households in the U.S., 1.2 million identify as same-sex. That is point zero zero nine four eight, or point nine four eight percent of the population, less than one percent of the population. I have no issue with people living the way they wanna live. However, I'm tired of it being shoved in my face. I am totally open to adults living the way they wanna live, however they choose to live. I have gay friends, I love them, no issue. But every time I walk into a retail store during Pride Month, it's in my face, it's being pushed at me. I don't know what rights my gay friends don't have that I have. I don't know, I have not heard any of my gay friends ever say to me, oh, I was discriminated against for this, I didn't get this job, I didn't get elected to a certain role because of who I choose to sleep with. So to me, this, it's not needed, it's already a national proclamation, and there are many residents in the town who don't support Pride Month. So that's just my piece, I just wanna put that out there. Thank you.
Thank you. And, anyone else? State name and address.
Lisa Brown, 64, Nash Memorial Road. Wasn't really planning to speak tonight, but I, I just think that, you know, earlier tonight, for example, we recognized some individuals, I know it was, you know, Representative Sullivan that gave citations to some individuals who joined the police force, great. We recognize those individuals, now we have the opportunity to say to many, many Abington residents, you are welcome in this town. I don't see how that is not specific enough, I don't see how that, like, is shoving it down in anyone else's face, it's just telling people that they're welcome in this town, and that they feel included. Like, that is what this proclamation is doing. It is not intended to be in anyone's face, it is not intended to make someone feel like they have to go along with someone else's beliefs, or change their own religious beliefs, or whatever personal beliefs they have. It is simply telling Abington residents that they feel included and welcome here, and I just don't see what's wrong with that. And we know for a fact, whether it's whatever percentage of the census data you gave, that there are Abington residents who are LGBTQ, and there is no reason to not tell them that they are welcome here. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Please state your name and address.
Paul Haggerty, 515 Summer Street, and proud dad of Alexander Haggerty. I just, I, I find it interesting, though, the meeting started with a policy and said, we've never had an issue with proclamations before, and they've always gone through, but now we do. What happened? That's what was stated early, was, we've never had an issue with proclamations before, but now there's a proclamation comes up, but we do have a problem with it. And I think Suzanne, you know, made a great point as far as the GSA. We think about the children in our community that, you know, look to, the adults look to the, the leaders of this town, and it's like, what message are we sending to them, where it's like, hey, listen, we get it, we wanna support you, but it's like, we really can't, 'cause, you know, we don't know what this leads to. I don't know what that means, what this leads to. These are people's lives. You know, when you ask about, like, what it's like, I mean, I grew up with, with Alexander was my son going through it, the bullying, the, the name-calling, the stuff behind the back, it's hard. I have a friend that's eighty-three years old, and he's told me, he goes, Paul, he goes, nobody would choose this life. So we can't offer a proclamation for the LGBTQ community to show support for adults, and more importantly, the children that are here? I mean, it's a proclamation, again, I go back to, it's like, we've, you said, we've never had a problem, these, why do we need a policy? But now all of a sudden, we got a problem! What is it? What is the problem? Why can't we support the LGBTQ students and adults in this community? I mean, you look at, you look at the, the suicide rate for children in this, this group, in the, like, the GSA, it's like four, five times higher than the rest of the community, for teenagers. They're struggling. I grew up with, I, I raised a child. I mean, come on, we, come on, Abington, we're gonna be better than this. I mean, again, I go back to, you started this discussion with proclamations, we've never had an issue, but now we do. I wanna know why. You say it's a slippery slope, what, where does this lead? Explain to me where does it lead, why? Because this is for gays and lesbians, transsexuals? And it's not about who you sleep with, it's who you love. It's who you love. I don't know why we can't do this. And nobody's trying to jam this down to anybody's throat, nobody's trying to push this on anybody, but it's like, I, I think about the kids over at Abington High School, they wanna see some support, and I wish that the leadership here in town can do this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public? Any other discussion from the board? Before I take any motion for this proclamation, I do wanna say that part of the reason that I took this is, most people know how I am personally about pride, and me being who I am. I'm very conservative about it. But I felt it was important that kids who are in my shoes, when I was growing up in Abington, know that they're elected officials in our community, support them. This is not about grandstanding, this is not about, you know, merchandise, this is not about jamming it down somebody's throat, because actually, when I was, when I was running for selectman, someone came up to me, after I did a pride announcement, and said, geez, I didn't know you were gay, I would've voted for you. And it took, I was offended by it. Because I didn't want that to be the most important thing about me being gay. But a proclamation like this sends a message to our community, and to, especially our kids, who I knew when I was thirteen years old. And I spent a lot of time trying to think I could fix myself. But the part of the reason that I put this on here, and putting myself out here and put, making it personal, was because this is important. So, with that being said, if there's nothing to be heard, I will hear any motions on the floor to either approve this or pass it over.
Do you wanna make the motion, or do you want?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, actually, I'm Chairman, sorry. Thank you, Mr. Donovan, sorry.
You don't have to read it.
I know, I know, I know I don't have to read it, but Abington has a history of moving the ball forward, and I think this is a, a great step forward. Abington elected the first woman selectman in Plymouth County. All right, this, this continues to prove that message, that Abington is an inclusive and supportive community. I will make the motion. Chairman makes the motion to approve Abington, the Town of Abington Proclamation in Recognition of Pride Month. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Donovan, thank you, Ms. Justburg, thank you. Mr. Donovan, anything else to be heard? All right, I will take a roll call vote. Ms. Justburg?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Justburg, yes. Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan, yes. Mr. DiMaggio?
I support all, but I'm a no.
All right, Mr. DiMaggio, no. Uh, Mr. Chapin?
No.
Mr. Chapin, no, and Chair votes yes. The, the proclamation is approved, and we, I will give this to Scott, I will give this to Nancy, and this will, will be on the town website. I, as Nancy did print it out, just in case, if we did approve it. Suzanne, when you come home, you can sign it, but I will, I wanna do this right now. I'm going to read the proclamation. For the, I'm gonna, I'm gonna read this proclamation. Whereas the month of June has been dedicated to commemorate the gay liberation protests that took place on June 28th, 1969, at the Stonewall Inn, known as the Stonewall Uprising. And whereas the Town of Abington recognizes that our nation was founded on freedom and upon the principles that all people are created equal, and that each person has the right to life, liberty, and pursuit of happiness. Whereas the Town of Abington is a welcoming community of promoting diversity and inclusion, dedicated to fostering acceptance of all its residents, and preventing discrimination and mistreatment of LGBTQ citizens. Whereas the Town of Abington recognizes LGBTQ rights are human rights. And whereas the Commonwealth of Massachusetts recognizes same-sex marriage since May 17th, 2004, as a result of the Supreme Court Judicial Court ruling in Goodridge v. Department of Public Health, first state in the United States of America. And whereas the voters of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts include the town, including the Town of Abington, voted in favor to pass a referendum to prohibit discrimination in public accommodations based on gender identity on November 6th, 2018, first state in the United States of America to pass statutes supporting transgender rights. Whereas the Town of Abington is emboldened upon the rich diversity of ethnic, cultural, racial, and gender and sexual identities of its residents, of, of which contribute to the vibrant character of our town. Whereas the Town of Abington recognizes the importance and contributions of members of the LGBTQ community, including the progress made by the Abington High School GSA, Gender and Sexual Alliance. And now therefore, we, the Board of Selectmen, and on behalf of the Town of Abington, for the first time in Abington's history, we proclaim and recognize the month of June of 2023 as Pride Month in support of the LGBTQ community, and we urge all residents to actively promote the principles of equality, liberty, dignity, and respect for all. Mr. Donovan? Thank you, Mr. Donovan. Ms. Justburg, I will get your signature. Mr. DiMaggio?
Are you signing?
Uh, I'll wait.
I'm not signing right now.
Mr. Chapin? Mr. Chapin?
Have you signed it?
Signed it, yeah.
Have you signed it?
No, I haven't yet. I will do after you guys.
Go ahead.
Sign it.
I'll wait, no, I want to do it after.
You want to make a show out of it?
Mr. DiMaggio?
I'll sign, I want to sign it. We both signed it.
All right, thank you.
Oops.
That's all good, thank you.
Did I sign on your spot?
No, you signed above and I signed below, you signed above meaning I signed below.
Oh, okay.
All right, thank you.
I just dawned on you, we went both Kevin and Dee.
All right, thank you. We will put that proclamation up on the town website. Hold on a second, let me get the agenda. Next on our agenda, we have discussion and vote to act the request by Plymouth County Retirement Association Board to accept 269 of the Acts of 2022 to allow a one-time increase to cost of living adjustment to retirees in FY23.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I'm going to recuse myself. I'm a retiree of the system, I'm not a retiree of the Town of Abington. Chapter 268A, Section 19B3, I believe, would allow me to participate, but it's kind of convoluted and rather than go through that whole machination, it's easier just to recuse myself. So I'd like the minutes to reflect that I'm getting up from the table and pointing myself over there.
Great, thank you. Mr. Donovan recuses himself, right? Scott, I will turn it over to you.
Well, I was actually counting on Kevin to explain the whole thing for us, but.
Chair.
Yes, Ms. Jesperg.
I'm a retiree of the Town of Abington, so I will have to excuse myself.
Thank you, Ms. Jesperg. Ms. Jesperg also recuses herself as well.
So the Plymouth County Commissioners had voted for a one-time increase of 5% to the COLA for the retirees. This was allowed through the legislature that said they could do this. Apparently, there was an increase to Social Security and this would sort of mimic that amount, I guess, overall. So the, all the towns, the 31 towns within the county have to vote now that the Retirement Board and the County Commissioners have voted, two-thirds of the towns have to also vote to approve this. At this time, and I've been on the list serve with the, most of the town managers in the area today, nobody else is actually, doesn't appear to have voted on it yet. I'm sure there's one or two towns that just hasn't answered yet. So everybody's just getting this. It looks like the cost to, the increased cost to the Town of Abington will be about $93,000 a year, starting in FY25, so it won't be a hit to us this year. But obviously, that's, it's going to be a large amount to factor in. That's it in a nutshell, I mean, this is for our retirees.
Was it $93,000 a year or was it spread out over the course of so many years?
The way I understand it and the way it was explained, it was per year.
Well, for how many years?
Five. So it's up to you folks to decide and apparently it'll only be up to the three of you.
I thought we were waiting for something.
No, no, actually, I just, I mean, it is, it's spread out over years and as far as I know, it's five years. About per year.
That's per year, $93,000 spread out over the five years.
No, the way I understand it, it's per year for the next five years.
That sounds like, that's a lot of money. This is over, this is 5%? The first $16,000 of a retiree, right, is what the COLA goes off of? Is this, it says right in front of my face, it says that. $16,000, so. This would be 5% one-time cost of living adjustment for the first $16,000 of all Abington, Plymouth County retirees. That's $500,000. Doesn't, that doesn't sound right, but okay, I figured it would be $93,000 over the five years, but. Do we need to vote tonight or could you get clarification?
No, you, you will not meet again before this has to be voted. This has to be done, I guess, by the end of this month.
Okay.
And we did just get this, so.
What would be the average cost to the, the average cost to the average Abington taxpayer?
Do some math. And this is still dependent, you said, on so many towns voting this as well?
Two-thirds of the towns that are affected by this will have to vote it.
You said other towns have already voted or?
As far as I've gotten from the towns that are on this list serve, I think Avon might be the only one who voted, but I think they actually voted it anyways prior to this.
You say Avon?
Yeah. Nobody else has responded that they have voted yet.
The Select Boards must vote on or before June 30th, 2023. We do, we are hoping, planning to meet on June 22nd.
That's true.
So, if this board wanted more information or if they wanted more inquiries, I'd be, I'd be all right with moving this by passing this on to a further agenda item for a future meeting.
Okay, so you'd be.
Lot of words for that.
Well, I guess, I mean, I'm finding the way I just, how does this affect us, the bottom line for us per year? Is this a big?
Yeah, I mean, we'll obviously factor this into our, our budget going when we, you know, not next year, but going into our next budget cycle, but I'll ask Andrew for some of those clarifications as far as, you know, what does it mean overall in the big scheme of things?
Further information, I will.
And we'll do it on the 22nd?
I will postpone this to June 22nd meeting. Anything else to be heard about it?
You good with that, Tim?
I'm good with that.
All right, thank you. All right, we're all set, you can come back, Ms. Jesperg, Mr. Donovan. This one, I'm going to try to be brief. The next, the next item is Chairman MBTA Advisory Board Representative update, May 24, 2023, Beacon Hill Meeting with Mastod Chief Safety Officer Patrick Leaven regarding commuter rail grade crossings. As, as it says out on our agenda, Scott and I and Senator Keenan and State Representative Allison Sullivan Almeida were able to secure a meeting with the Mastod Chief Safety Officer Patrick Leaven to discuss the, the situation of our grade crossings, specifically from Pine Street to Plymouth Street. So, and I have, I have to say that I, I reached out to Senator Keenan's office to acquire this meeting as soon as I became Chair and they were, the Mastod were very eager to have this conversation. Just to give a brief overview of it, it was a very, very productive first meeting that Mastod and the MBTA do want to collaborate with the Town of Abington regarding safety measures, signage and educational programs for our students and our community as a whole. So it's a huge leap forward and they made it clear to us that, you know, that was going to be the first of many discussions. Actually, Scott and I were made sure that that, that's when we, when we went in, that that's what it was going to be. Honestly, and Scott said when we were, we were coming home, it was a home run for the town to finally, to take these first steps to bringing, to bringing some safety to our crossings. And in the same time, we also, we had a follow-up meeting with the Chief Safety Officer and the MBTA Railroad Officer, Ryan Cullen. We met, met here in the meeting here, met here in the quarter room with the Department Heads Police, Fire and Public Health Nurse and DPW. And again, the collaborations are growing stronger and we are moving forward. There are plans, we are drafting plans in place with the MBTA and the Mastod. I don't want to get into the specifics because as Scott, when we met with Ryan and Patrick, that coming down by the end of this month or next month, we are going to be issuing a joint plan of action for the MBTA crossings. So this is huge, huge, but I do want to give a personal shout-out to our amazing Public Health Nurse, Lindsey Wright, who is working with Operation Lifesaver to hopefully get into the schools to help kids about suicide prevention and also train safety. So things are in the work. Again, you know, we, we knew about this, we knew about this meeting before May 24th. I did not want us to talk about it, anything publicly until we met. There's been a lot of, there has needed to be a lot of little less conversation, more action. And the fact that we now have that and we are moving forward, I'm glad to report and I'm, and with Scott, that we are moving forward, we will continue to keep the public informed. So if, any comments or questions from anyone on the board or Scott? Did I miss anything?
Nope, very good.
Awesome. Beautiful. All right, thank you. And I also, all right, thank you, Ms. Jesperg. I do want to give a specific shout-out to Senator Keenan because we, we used his office for it and he reached out after I requested and helped us move forward here. So thank you to Senator Keenan and also Sullivan, Sullivan Almeida, our representative, was a tremendous advocate during the meeting. The Abington team was very strong, so we've got good things moving forward. All right. Next on our agenda, we have discussion and vote of Board of Selectmen recommendations to the Charter Review Committee. I sent to the, so I was called before the Charter Review Committee to give recommendations specifically for budget process and appointment process. I did not want to speak out of terms or speak for the board as a whole, so I, I said to them that I will come back to us for a consensus of what we feel or what we want to recommend to the Charter Review. So I have also messaged, I have emailed the Board of Selectmen if there are any recommendations they see fit for specifically budget process and the appointment process.
The only question I would have is to the Town Manager if he's happy with the current language, or is he happy with the current language, I guess I should say?
As far as the financial fiscal procedures?
Yeah, so in other words, are you comfortable with the parameters that they set forth on the Charter as to the submission of the budget?
Yeah, no, I don't really have trouble with the timelines and those things.
If that's, I mean, if these are the people that have got to work with it, we really don't, they've got to do the nitty-gritty. If he's happy with the time, if he's happy, I'm happy, so I don't see the need to do anything with it.
Mr. DiMaggio, anything?
I have nothing to.
All right, Mr. Chapin?
Yeah, no, as far as the budget and timelines and everything, I think we've done, I think it's worked out pretty well over the past few years, so I wouldn't see any changes. As far as appointments and removals, I have nothing specific, but I'm open to hear if anybody does. There's some things that don't work. It's not as fluid as I'd like it to be, but I honestly can't think of a better way to do it.
Yeah.
So I'm not, I'm not saying it's perfect to keep it, but if anybody's ideas, I'll listen, maybe, maybe you know something I don't.
Well, specifically to, for appointments, I think, do we want to be clear in the Charter about when the, the terms expire? Do we want, or am I imagining that?
They all expire June 30th, right?
June 30th?
It's the end of the fiscal year.
Yeah. It's pretty specific, I don't know, if you want to make it like 4:00 PM or something, that's more specific.
Yeah.
I don't know.
Close the business.
We have been asked that.
Close the business is a problem.
We have been.
Close the business.
Because if it's a Friday, that's a different time than a Thursday.
I, I would, I would suggest, though, that you probably could handle that in something in your selectman handbook or a policy for the selectman.
It wouldn't have to be a charter change.
Right.
Well, my only concern is, that's a good point, but remember we tried by policy to make it a requirement that you had to be a town resident? And then Town Council came, we did that through our selectman policies and then Town Council came back to us and says, whoa, 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 you can't do that, you have to do it by.
By Charter. I actually wasn't in favor of that.
I think it was Charter.
So I'm not going to suggest it now.
Yeah.
I do think Avenue residents should have preference, but if there was an open spot that somebody had a good reason from out of town to be on, I'm open to that.
Ms. Jesperg, anything? Any comment? All right. Because I have always talked about policies and procedures and things like that, I've done the past few, few years. So I did have a couple of things. Obviously, you know, it has to be approved by the board here. I'm not going to speak out of terms, but specifically for the submission of the budget, actually, no, that's not under that. Submission of the, submission of the budget, so 6-2, under, under in addition, I am suggesting, as presented in the annual town, in the annual Town of Abington Performance Review Professional Development Plan for the Town Manager, the Board of Selectmen shall review in open meeting post the start of the fiscal year, for the new fiscal year, the planning/leadership and project objectives and professional development plans as it pertains, as it pertains to the fiscal budget with the Town Manager. The Board of Selectmen shall discuss with the Town Manager the financial goals for the ensuing fiscal year prior to the date a budget is required to be submitted to the Finance Committee as specified by law. So to give a more depth overview, Scott, you and I were talking about this, that when we, as our duty, when we do the review of the Town Manager every year, part of the review includes, you know, planning, leadership and projective, project objectives and professional development plans. And I think whether, and if it pertains to, I think those could be valuable, especially if it pertains to financial, for fiscal objectives, if you will.
Can I?
Sure, Mr. Donovan?
I think one thing we have to remember, the Charter is like the foundation of a house. It's the, the foundation of the government. It isn't, the whole idea of the Charter isn't to dump everything in it. Something of that nature may be more suited for either the bylaws or a policy statement by the board. The only thing I would not want to see is the Charter to get overloaded. The Charter on its, by its very definition is supposed to be a broad policy-type thing and not specific to, you know, individual outside of the general operation. So I, I think something like that may be more suited in the bylaws and probably not properly before the Charter Committee. So that's something maybe you can work with Scott when we do the annual town meeting and look at bylaw changes, that may be something, or we can work, you know, as far as a policy statement. I don't know that I, I don't know that it's appropriate to put on the Charter.
All right, that's fine. I understand. Any thoughts, comments from the board, Scott?
You kind of lost me. What's the, what are you proposing we change?
Not change, just add.
Add, right.
Everything you read you want to add.
Everything that I read to add.
Can I see them writing?
Sure, absolutely.
Trouble called.
Thanks.
Yeah. So, second thing.
Talk amongst yourselves.
All right, sir.
I, sorry, it's just, I comprehend better when I read.
Sure, no problem. So, no, if the board is, so it sounds to me, so the board is not in favor of doing something like this for a Charter Review, but perhaps maybe by bylaws or policies?
Yeah, that seems like it's definitely more by policy.
Yeah, that seems like it's definitely more by policy. I mean, you're getting real specific on how we should review the Town Manager. This is too specific for the budget, in my opinion.
Yeah. Yeah, it's not... Well, it's not necessarily...
And I don't disagree with what you wrote there.
Yeah, it's not necessarily review of the Town Manager, but take the pieces...
Of his review and put it into the Charter. It just doesn't seem... Seems too much.
That's why I wanted to have an open discussion about this, to see how the board felt.
Not a bad idea, though. Bring it up again.
Yeah. All right. The only other thing that I was wondering, but this could also be part of policy and review, there was the... Section 6-3, the budget message. I wrote, "The Town Manager shall review the budget message for the ensuing fiscal year with the Board of Selectmen. The Board of Selectmen shall submit financial goals for the ensuing fiscal year."
We can do that by policy.
Oh, that... We can do that by policy.
And that's already kind of in Section 6-2C, where it says the Town Manager should...
Shall provide.
Shall provide a general summary of the proposed budget.
Okay.
I think that's the way that the Charter was written. I don't think it's broken. I wouldn't... I wouldn't support changing that.
All right. The only other thing that I have for appointment process was I know that the Charter Review has talked about it, and it's been suggested before, that associate ... That I would recommend that continuing... There was a recommendation to change the... Not so much change, but the allowance of how much associate members are allowed to speak during meetings. I know that was something that was in the past proposed. I think as one selectman, I think that'd be something we should encourage to steer away from.
I think in each individual board should have their own say on that. I don't think that's something for the selectmen to say. If the zoning board of appeals, they have their own policy and procedures.
Yeah.
I think they could handle how much they should allow their associate members to speak. I don't think we should dictate.
All right, so we don't want to chime into that?
I don't. I don't think that us getting involved with other boards is as little as possible is the way I like things.
All right. Any input, Ms. Justburg?
No, I do agree that they should have their own policies, especially with the associates. Associate members. I can only speak with the senior center. We only allowed information for the committee, but not the associate.
Thank you, Ms. Justburg. All right, so if... Would the board... Let me think. So there really aren't any changes that we would like to see implemented as a consensus? So, of course, but even that in itself is a consensus. Would you... Would... I could entertain a motion to pass that along to the Charter Review.
I make a motion that we maintain status quo on the question that was put to us by the Charter Committee relating to the...
All right, there's a... Thank you. All right, there's a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All right. Roll call, Ms. Justburg?
I agree.
Hi. All right, Ms. Justburg is yes. Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Yes. Chair votes yes. Mr. DiMaggio?
Yes.
Yes. All right, Mr. Chapin?
Yes.
Yes. All right, unanimous. All right. We'll get that over to the Charter Review Committee. A discussion and vote on MOU with Franklin Pierce University.
So I gave everybody a copy of that. I'm going to ask you to probably put this off until your next meeting. I did send this over to Greg Corbo last week at KP Law, because there are... Although on its face, it seems simple enough and innocent enough. There could be implications as far as, you know, Chapter 30B goes, or using town resources for... This is a for-profit university, and what they're offering is discounted tuition for town employees, but along with that, then it would be a sort of a partnership program where they would, you know, promote themselves through our either websites or onsite premise. You know, they would have a presence maybe occasionally at the school or here to promote their university. So, like I said, you know, it seems innocent enough, but there could be implications, so I'm waiting to get some more information from Attorney Corbo.
All right, thank you, Scott. We will postpone that to our next meeting. All right. Next on our agenda, a set Board of Selectmen meeting schedule for June through September 2023. Yes, Mr. Donovan?
My suggestion would be we... There's another meeting July... Excuse me, June 22nd, which, by the way, I will not be here. I've got another appointment. And after that, we have to, by statute, meet before July 15th to do the interdepartmental transfers. So... And I think at that point, there's certainly enough information that we can deal with the issues of calling a special town meeting in October and have that on the agenda. So I would suggest that we meet July 10th, and because August is traditionally a slow month, and traditionally, you know, everybody's schedule is mishmashed all around, I would say after July 10th, see you in September. That we'll come back on our regular schedule in September, unless, of course, if something of importance or an emergency comes up, the Town Manager can be in contact with us, but I really don't want to meet for the sake of meeting. I can say that. But I think that we'll have enough to be able to take care of enough business on July 10th, and then resume our regular schedule in September is my suggestion. I don't know what everybody else thinks.
So moved.
All right, so let... Look at it. So we got June 26th.
June 22nd, I think.
Oh, man.
No, 22nd's like a Thursday.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's 26.
26. I'm sorry, I read that wrong.
So June 26th, July 10th.
My mouth was moving past the end of my head.
September 11th.
All right, so June 26th, July 10th, and September 11th?
And then, do you want to set the other one, September 25th?
Oh, yes, I do have...
Well, I think then we just go back on our regular schedule, second, yeah.
Okay. But this way, we can then add this to the town website, so we can... I like how the Board of Health does, like, they... Their meeting's well in advance on the town website, so this is an effort for us to do that. So June 26th, July 10th, September 11th, and September 25th. All right. Is there any other... Any issues with that?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. There was a second... There's a motion in a second? All right, Ms. Justburg?
Yes.
All right, Ms. Justburg, yes. Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan, yes. Chair, yes. Mr. DiMaggio?
Yes.
Mr. DiMaggio, yes. Mr. Chapin?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Chapin, yes. So unanimous. All right, perfect. And everyone we always look forward to is the Town Manager Report.
Oh, I'm sorry to disappoint you, man.
We've been here a while, Scott.
But I do not have one for you this evening, mostly. I think we've touched on some of the things that we've been working on, so I would just recommend that we go into the executive session and deal with those matters, only to come back out into open session.
And to come out. Before we do go into executive session, I do want to... I want to say thank you to you, Scott. Scott has been tremendous when it has come to talking with the MBTA and Mastod. He was a huge champion and continues to be a huge champion, so I want to give kudos where kudos is due. So thank you, Scott, you know?
I'm sorry, did you have something else?
Go ahead.
I just want to... I just noticed something. A packet, a public announcement. I don't think anybody read for the library.
Sure, go for it.
Do you mind if I... They asked us to read this, and that would have been rude if we didn't. Sorry. But the summer reading kickoff is Wednesday, June 21st, from 1:00 to 3:30. Join us in the Abington Public Library side for summer reading swag, fun games, and tattoos, with a special appearance at 1:30 by Mr. Vinnie and Bubbles. They're both going to be there. To learn more about the summer reading event at the library, come to the library or call library, 781-982-2139, or check out the website, worldwidewed.amtonpl.org.
All right, thank you. So with that, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I am moved. We go into our executive session in accordance with the provisions, Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21. To discuss contract negotiations with non-union personnel, specifically the Fire Chief and Deputy Fire Chief, and the Board will reconvene in open session to vote on the said contracts.
Second. All right, there's a motion and a second, and this going into the executive session, and we will reconvene, correct?
One question for discussion.
Alex?
Yes, yes.
Do we normally vote on the Fire Chief and Deputy Chief contracts?
The Charter does require you guys...
It's different than police, right?
No, I think actually it's all of them. We just didn't do it that way.
Okay.
But you should, yeah.
Okay.
I think I was the only one that you haven't done, actually.
The Charter says it. I'm good. Thanks. All right, so, and with going into executive session, there's a roll call vote. Ms. Justburg?
Yes.
All right, yes. Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan's yes, Chair's yes. Mr. DiMaggio, yes?
Yes.
Mr. Chapin, thank you. We are now in executive session, and we will return.